This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-6, at sec., notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board. Councilmember Von Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilmember Pataglia.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here.
I mean, flag salute.
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Proclamation that you have?
I do have one proclamation. It's a little ironic, this proclamation tonight, but hold on and I will read it. And the proclamation reads, whereas all children in the city of Hackensack should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Hackensack recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the city of Hackensack to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Hackensack, and whereas the city of Hackensack is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas the city of Hackensack has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the county by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack City Council, do hereby recognize January 20th through January 26th, 2019, as School Choice Week in the city of Hackensack, and call this subservience to the attention of all of our citizens. So if you were here for our heated school debate a little while ago, that's for all our teachers and students. Okay, moving forward. I need a motion to accept the minutes for November 20th with the 2018 COW and regular meeting.
Offer. You can do December 11th.
And December 11th, 2018 COW and regular meeting, both meetings.
Offer again.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? And with that, we go into the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and invite a guest. This is the City Manager's Report for January 8, 2019. Reminder, Christmas trees will be picked up every Wednesday throughout the month of January. Your 2019 recycling calendar has been mailed to all residents. Additional copies are available at City Hall, Department of Public Works, and the Building Department. NICSOL reminders, please refer to your recycling calendar to update your NICSOL messaging settings. It's an expanded use of the NICSOL program. It identifies all the protocols for NICSOL. Certain reminders will fall under different settings, so you want to ensure that all residents receive NICSOL messages they are most concerned about. You get to select under the new program. Four, Open Swim will be starting up again February 6. Please refer to our website to view the flyer under Events. Five, H-PAC upcoming events. Be sure to check our hpac.org for the 2019 schedule for events. The city and the cooperation through the, our Cultural Arts Board has really done a nice job, and we continue to provide entertainment and education through that center. Building Department. Six, Updates. Ninety-one notices written, 186 inspections made, 17 summonses issued, 12 COs done, four sidewalk inspections, 14 Oprah requests fulfilled. Finally, and seven, Happy New Year to you and your families, and we wish you all the best and happiness. And that would complete the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, sir. Going right into city business, Resolution.
One.
One, -19.
Yep.
Starting all over again.
We're gonna start all over again. This is a resolution for final adoption of Ordinance Number 54-2018, an ordinance authorizing a 30-year tax exemption for a multi-phase market rate rental apartment, a rental project to be constructed at the former records site by RFEHA Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law NJ SA 40A:20-1 at sec. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing none opposed. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing none opposed. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. You're up.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 54-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Yeah. Resolution 2-19.
This is the resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 57-2018. Final adoption of ordinance number 57-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to relocate a bus stop on Essex Street within the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Hey, need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only from the public, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing no one from the audience or from the public, need a motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 57-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Are we pulling, we're pulling three?
Well, with respect to Resolution 319, which is the adoption of ordinance 58-2018, we have some issues that have been raised internally that may require potentially some amendments to this ordinance. This is the one that further regulates landscapers within the city. It was my suggestion that if there was, we could either table it to the next meeting, but if there is somebody here in the audience who was intending to speak specifically on this ordinance and would prefer to speak tonight, to open to the public and give them an opportunity to speak in case they may not be able to appear at the next meeting. But there will not be a final vote on this ordinance tonight while we're still addressing the internal issues raised.
At the next meeting, will it be open to the public again?
I would recommend that as well. I think there's nothing wrong with giving additional opportunity.
I make a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak to Resolution 3-19, please come forward.
Do you want me to explain what 3-19 is?
As I said, I explained that it's the ordinance that will further regulate landscapers within the city of Hackensack amending Chapter 94 of the Code of the City of Hackensack.
There's no one from the public, so motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I would make another motion to postpone to the next meeting.
I need a motion to postpone this, table it to the next meeting, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this will be carried to the January 29th meeting. Resolution 04-19.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 59-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to add a new handicap parking space in Section 49.2 Parking for the Handicap. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Thank you. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on Resolution or ordinance 4-19, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're up.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 59-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 5-19.
Okay, now this one is.
Pulling this?
Only for.
No, it's just a public hearing.
A public hearing. So this is a final adoption of ordinance number 60-2018, an ordinance to amend 321 Main Street redevelopment plan. It's been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, so I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 5-19, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, a motion to close to the public? Motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Let's have a motion to.
Now you need a motion to table the vote on ordinance 60-2018 to the next meeting, which is January 29th, 2019. So you need someone to make the motion.
I need a motion.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Okay. That's for the 29th as well?
Yes.
And we will open to the public again?
No, that one will just be for the vote.
Okay. Okay. Resolution 6-19.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 61-2018, an ordinance amending city of Hackensack rehabilitation plan for the Main Street area in need of rehabilitation. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's adopted.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 61-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 7-19.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 62-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to establish a four-way stop at the intersection of Atlantic Street and Second Street. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 62-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 8-19.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 2-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to permit certain residents of Essex Street to obtain residence and apartment permits.
Yes, the drug.
Yeah.
8-19 is not the drug.
Isn't that the drug? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed my number.
No, we.
I think it's already off.
Oh, it's already gone. Oh, okay. I have the old docket, sorry.
Oh, you have the old docket.
Sorry. My notes are on the old one.
It says draft. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I. I'm sorry, all my notes are on there.
I pulled that, that one was pulled before we even got started.
Apologize.
Okay, so we're introducing it. Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 2-2019 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 29th, 2019 at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein' she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 9-19.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 3-2019, an ordinance to amend and update Chapter 108 of the Code of the City of Hackensack entitled Limousine Services.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 3-2019 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 29th, 2019 at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein' she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
This is for Resolution 10?
Yes.
-2019. Okay, this is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 4-2019, an ordinance to amend the salary for Class III Special Law Enforcement Officers within the city of Hackensack. I know you wanted to get this moving.
Yes, need a motion, please?
You gotta go home.
Yeah. Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance number 4-2019 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 29th, 2019 at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein' she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Need a motion, please?
Yep. You skipped.
No, skipped.
This is Resolution 11-19, which is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 5-2019, an ordinance adding Chapter 3B to the Code of the City of Hackensack to establish a stigma-free advisory board.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 5-2019 is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 29th at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein' she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you.
Resolution 12- I'm gonna do this now. Resolution 12-19. The resolution authorizing tax appeal to settle the 2011, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 tax appeals entitled Browertown Associates Inc. versus City of Hackensack. Docket numbers 012128-2011, 0007-07-2012, 006578-2013, 006, I'm sorry, 004061-2014, 002275-2015, 005259-2016, 001749-2017, 00706-2018 of the tax assessment of Block 341, Lot 10, Notice 336 Prospect Avenue in the city of Hackensack, Bergen County, New Jersey. Need a motion?
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Resolution 13-19.
The resolution authorizing the acceptance of a state of New Jersey fiscal year 2018 Safe and Secure Communities Grant.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 14-19.
The resolution authorizing the 2020 HypaD grant.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Resolution 15-19.
This is a resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack to fix the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes, assessments, or any other municipal charges.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 16-19.
A resolution authorizing an accelerated tax lien sale.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Resolution 17-19.
A resolution authorizing the cancellation of small balances by the tax collector.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 18-19.
A resolution authorizing tax refunds for overpayments, tax sale, decreased assessment, consolidation of lots, duplicate payments, and state board judgments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution 19-19, please?
Is a resolution authorizing 2018 budget appropriation transfers.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 20-19.
Is a resolution authorizing adoption of the 2019 temporary budget.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-19.
This is a resolution authorizing a cash management plan including designation of approved depositories.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Resolution 22-19.
A resolution authorizing a petty cash fund.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 23-19.
A resolution authorizing a ward of contract suburban consulting engineers for CSO wastewater operator service license.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 24-19.
A resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $116,572.86 to Deputy Fire Chief Kenneth Palmer.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Resolution 25-19.
A resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $83,540.42 to Fire Lieutenant Joseph Pompo.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Resolution 26-19.
Resolution authorizing for accrued time payout of $88,603.11 to Fire Captain John McMorro.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any conflicts with the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah.
None?
Wait, you forgot to pay my bills.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to pay those?
27-19.
You let home, you man.
We're not the federal government, come on.
Resolution 27-19.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that, Bills. Okay, consent agenda, no conflicts? Okay, go ahead, read it as peers.
Okay. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolutions 28-19 through Resolution 36-19. 28-19 is a resolution authorizing an ambulance reimbursement. 29-19, a resolution authorizing raffle license applications for the Rotary Club of Hackensack. Resolution 30-19, a resolution authorizing board and commission reappointments and new appointments. Resolution thirty-one dash nineteen is a resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants for two thousand and nineteen. Resolution thirty-two dash nineteen, a resolution to remove a member from the Hackensack Environmental Commission. Resolution thirty-three dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing requesting the planning board undertake a preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether the delineated area of block three oh three lot fourteen, which is seventeen Mercer Street, satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes. Resolution thirty-four dash nineteen, the resolution authorizing requesting the planning board undertake a preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether the delineated area of block four eleven lots sixteen and eighteen, otherwise known as four sixty-three, four seventy-three through four eighty-three Main Street, satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes. Resolution thirty-five dash nineteen is a resolution authorizing a community garden at Johnson Park. Resolution thirty-six dash nineteen is a resolution to adopt shared services agreement with the county of Bergen to permit the city to store road salt on county-owned property on Kansas Street. And I need a motion.
Before you do, I just want to put one thing on the record, because resolution thirty-two nineteen regarding removal of a member of the Hackensack Environmental Commission, I did send two letters, including a rice notice for tonight, to that individual and received no response whatsoever. So he was received and I approve of delivery of the notice. So just so that's clear for the record.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that, I need a motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. You will have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Martin Smith, two four five Prospect Avenue. I'm a member of the Hackensack condo co-op advisory board and the chairman of their traffic safety committee. First, I'd like to start my comments this evening by thanking the mayor and the city council for a wonderful Veterans Day program at our city green. If there's any group of people in our city or our country who deserves to be honored, it's those who go by the noble name of veterans. So thank you for a very enjoyable morning.
Thank you, sir.
At the June twenty-third meeting of the council, I presented information to you concerning the lack of designated crosswalks at intersections on five major streets in Hackensack that I had surveyed. At that time, I was advised by the council that four of the streets in question were county streets and therefore were not under the city's jurisdiction. At a subsequent meeting of the council, I asked if anyone on the council had contacted county concerning this issue, and the mayor answered that he had not contacted the county, and that was about three months ago. I'm wondering if that situation has changed and whether or not county has been notified as to the need for designated crosswalks to make these streets safer.
I still have not contacted county, but...
I have, and they've been, they've been noticed.
Do we have any feedback from them yet?
That would be no.
That would be no. Okay, so that leaves us with Prospect Avenue, which is a city street and does come under our jurisdiction. After the June twenty-third meeting, Mr. Ehrenberg requested that I provide him with a list of those intersections on Prospect Avenue that lacked designated crosswalks, and I sent that to him on the day after that meeting in an email, and he had those in his possession. I'm wondering if the city has considered putting crosswalks in on those areas that I had indicated to Mr. Ehrenberg in my email.
Okay, sir. That list was presented to the traffic bureau of the Hackensack Police Department's Traffic Bureau. I got an estimated cost of each one of those intersections, I should say, crosswalks to put in there. The major concern that I have, and I've stated this publicly before, and I'll state it again, there is no preconceived notion for people that are driving that there's going to be mid-block crosswalks and without, let me finish, without putting ample warning lights and devices in place to basically acknowledge that these crosswalks are in here, I think is a safety concern. So I have two problems. When I completely disagree with you, that just putting crosswalks in there is going to assist people, because what the perception in the world seems to be is you just put your hooded sweatshirt on and these crosswalks now provide some immunity that you're not going to get run over when you step out in front of it, because this seems to be a general lack of people's knowledge. As we've stated before, there are three E's in traffic: engineering enforcement, education. The public is naive to think that just because you step out in that crosswalk, that you're going to be safe. As I explained, let me finish. As I explain to my children, the cemetery is full of people that were dead right. Unfortunately, they made the mistake of stepping out and were hit. So, my point is that I have two issues. One, I'd have to get the support of the mayor and council to put in the budget, funding to put crosswalks in, because it's not, we just paint some lines on the road and we make this happen. There's a defined process, and also, I don't think it's as defined as putting a traffic signal in, but they should be, a traffic study reviewed. Two, there's a cost associated with it.
Well, I, basically, I was not talking about mid-block crosswalks, but I was going to get to that. I was speaking about the intersections that are currently not covered by designated crosswalks, and there were eight of them on Prospect Avenue, from the north end of Prospect to the south end. I'd like to show you a couple of pictures, if I may.
Sure, sir. You have, you've got twenty seconds left, so just seeing that.
Well, this is Prospect Avenue and Berry Street and Prospect Avenue and Golf Place. If you will note that there are designated crosswalks on the secondary streets, Berry Street and Golf Place, but there are no corresponding designated crosswalks on the main street, Prospect Avenue. I wonder if you could make a guess as to what the rationale of the Department of Traffic was in putting crosswalks on the secondary streets but not on Prospect Avenue?
Well, I think that the observation is, I'm looking at two photos that this gentleman supplied, and one of them has a picture of a big, bright red stop sign with a reflective device on the post. The reason why the crosswalk's there is the stop sign is the traffic control device. The next point of these intersections are now mid-block, and there is no traffic control device in place for safety concerns.
What do you, I don't understand what you mean, mid-block. That's an intersection of two streets, Prospect and Berry and Prospect and Golf Place. Those are intersections.
When you're driving down Prospect, you're not looking at the side streets, you're driving ahead. So the minute you put that crosswalk across there, you're basically enabling residents and pedestrians to think that there's some concept that they're going to walk across there and they're going to be safe, because they're now in a crosswalk.
I'm talking about Prospect Avenue. There is no corresponding designated crosswalk on Prospect Avenue.
Correct.
So what I'm saying is, there must have been some rationale for the Department of Traffic to consider putting a designated crosswalk in on a secondary street but not on a main street.
You need to readdress this, take this offline, because we're way past the three minutes.
You know, it's very important for us to have safe streets in Hackensack.
Sir, I'm a safety officer at a hospital. I know how important it is, especially with the crosswalks idea with the...
You know, I think it took less time for us to convince the council to put in a traffic light at Beach Street and Prospect for a quarter of a million dollars.
We'll agree with the city manager that crossing a block, in the middle of a block just because it's a crosswalk there is sometimes very dangerous.
Well, this is not mid-block. This is an intersection.
We're way past three minutes, sir. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
The end of Pasco Parker Avenue. I understand what he's saying, because it's down by the hospital, there's one mid-block. So I don't know why you can't down at the other end of Prospect, because how, people cross in the middle there anyway. So maybe you could look into that. So I don't think I'm going to get yelled down this time, because all those people left. Your group left, your Devonshire group. And last, that meeting, during public, you threw out all the rules, time, everything. And what a farce you're coming down here, John, putting a different hat on. Your mayor, twenty-four seven. Doesn't matter what hat or what letter you write, your mayor, twenty-four seven. And you said you never, never change that hat. You also threw out a lot of what-ifs, maybes, pointing finger, fingers, past problems. Hello, what number city manager are we on? What number attorney are we on? Come on. Those who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. You guys have, have made your share of mistakes, all right? And the people that you're talking to now are not the people that were on the board then, and it was unanimous. Even the group that you supported, unanimous, support this, and cannot kick the can down the road any further. It wasn't done before because they weren't able to, for whatever reason. There were reasons, just like things happened before, and now you're shoving all this stuff down our throats that people don't even know about. They're like, what is the M and M building? That's the biggest one where you're a hypocrite. And yes, you're a hypocrite, John, because you, only because a group of people came to the planning board after you already were ready for construction and having trucks in their front yards, you didn't tell them. You didn't let them know what was going on. You just think you have a mandate, because you were elected, to, for the kids, do the M and M building, which is only for a small group of kids. Like I said before, this is for all kids, and you didn't tell them you were going ahead with it. You made an announcement at a senior luncheon at the M and M, rather than tell the people that came here to talk to you, and you thought that was sufficient. That was sufficient notice. No, because people said, when did you say you were going to go ahead with it? You never did, except you said, and you said it. And if you want me to pull the video, hey, we got people pulling videos, plenty of videos of you saying we need a new school building. Plenty of buildings, plenty of video. But now, no, no, you, on your Facebook page, you say, for years now, you're saying need a new school, but now, now you're saying maybe we don't need a new school, and this is the farce you guys have been playing up here. I know somebody up there wants to get their hands on this project. I know that, and it's gone, that, that you can't do it, that they are going to do a big project. I know that, because you could do it better. No, you can't.
Next, please.
Rich Serbo, Spring Valley Ave, Hackensack.
How are you, sir? Happy New Year.
How are you, John? Happy New Year to you. You know, the basis of our effective government is confidence, okay? Comes from, JFK said that, and so we need to have confidence in who's making decisions for us, and I'm going to surprise you tonight that I have confidence in you tonight. I, I feel good that you're challenging this lavish or costly spending by the Board of Education. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't have the best schools in town. I think we should, but I'm glad you're challenging this. I, I commend you. It's terrific. I'm shocked almost. So now, what's, what's the process of you asking to cancel the election? I don't think that's possible, though, is it? And we're, no. I, I think I saw that you were, you were hoping to, you know, throw it out. I mean, what an arbitrary decision that would be. I mean, you can't do that. So I guess to fight against this is the best thing. But I'm so, I'm so glad that you have stood up and have done this, and it proves to you that I'm on your side too, John, okay?
Thank you.
So, and look, let's, but...
We should all be on the same side.
Okay.
All the time.
But let's also, let's, let's also throw in the fact that when, when we challenged some of your programs and your spending, you just kind of, your dander went up, and so you, you silenced us, and that's, I think that's part of the cutting down of our time here at the podium. I, I think it's, it's, you know, I think there was a concerted effort for you to, to silence us and sort of censor the public when, when things were said, not in your favor. So, but, but let's stick with, let's stick with the positive for tonight. I, I'm glad you're challenging this, this spending that I don't think was really well-thought-out by the Board of Education. I think you made some great points, and I hope, I hope you're successful in, in what you're doing here with, with that. And so also, but I, and I, this, this doesn't, this isn't congruent with what I'm saying just now, but, John, when you wear a hat in public, okay, it's, it's, it's disrespectful. It's, removing your hat is about respect and trust, okay? It's a, it's a gentleman's almanac fact, okay? So please, okay?
Thank you, Mr. So much. Next, please.
Good evening. Donna West, Union Street in Hackensack. I guess I'm a little bothered by part of the conversation that I'm overhearing. I do not often get to attend these meetings because I'm usually at the Board of Ed meetings. They seem to still be clashing and meeting at the same time, which is a problem, but we'll talk about that another time. I understand the issues with the city council, having an issue with the referendum. I pray, I hope, that it is not some kind of personal thing, because I have been in Hackensack all fifty, of my fifty-one years, have attended all of the schools, and I know that Hackensack has wonderful things to offer our children. One of you sitting there has children in the school where I teach. One of you is married to a teacher, one who's absent, actually works in the school, so I'm a little confused, but that's not why I'm here. Okay, so everywhere I drive down Hackensack, there seems to be all of this construction. It's that six of, six half dozen things as opposed to three completed things. So I want to ask, one, where do we get the information for timeframes on the completion? Because all I see is demolition and fences up, which are really a hazard. The other thing is, I'm also here speaking because I am an associate minister at Monalve Baptist Church, and with all of this, not, I mean, recently, every time it rains, our church floods. And I say that because we're at the bottom of Prospect Avenue, where I know that there's been a lot of construction. I also know that Central Avenue, between First Street and Central Avenue, has been repaved about three or four times in less than a year, and yet there are huge indentations in that street. So I'm concerned about the infrastructure, whether you agree with a new school or not, whether these buildings continue to go up or not, what are the plans for the infrastructure, the pipes and all of that, that have to sustain this, these buildings? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Marie Paul, Sutton Avenue in Hackensack. I would like to continue on something that the mayor mentioned earlier, like we're all on the same side. I'm hoping that we all believe that our children in Hack, at those schools deserve and need a better way to learn, to study, that means a better school to attend to. I do know Mr. LeBros's wife, because my son attended his wife's class, first grade, who he's in a college now, and I know those schools been talking long enough about we need schooling, which mean if he was in Mrs. LeBros's class, that mean he passed and go to the high school and all of that. So we do agree, we do need better schools. We watch the main, Main Street, the Main Street getting facelift, the courthouse getting bigger, even the jail getting better looking. So how, why are we fighting for our kids to have a better school to attend to, where the teachers can teach better, when it's hot, they don't have to just, I mean, about to pass out, where the kids can focus? We need to invest on our, the future of our kids as a resident and also as a mother and taxpayer and all like that. I, I'm asking what portion that the hospital and all those projects that's taking place in the main street, what portion of the tax are they going to pay towards that referendum of having a better school for the kids? Are they going to pay something, and if it is, how much? Because it's not fair that the taxpayer will take the burden of doing that, not because we don't want to. It is our pleasure to have a better place for our kids, but it's also not fair that they're using the local, the facility and not taking anything, I mean, take everything for granted. We would like to know how much the hospital or other places, all those constructions gonna be paying towards all of that project. Because if we look at parameters, their taxes low is because the mall taking a big part. So we do not have a mall. I know we have Riverside. Why can't the hospital take some of that? We can learn from how parameters work, or fail on, or that thing. The point is, let's all agree that Hackensack do need a better school. Simple as that. Whatever it takes, however we're gonna face it, we need to invest on our kids, because we need to invest in their future. Because what you saw, that's what you, if we do bad, give them bad thing, that's what's gonna come back. Soon or later, they're gonna be our nurses, our doctors, our lawyers. Do you want a good nurse, good lawyer and stuff? So it's time now to start investing on those now, not later. Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Thank you. Cassine Gaines, lifelong Hackensack resident and proud alumnus of our public schools. I'm speaking here tonight in that capacity and also as a home-owning taxpayer. I am in our schools every day, often six times a week, and as I believe you know, in your heart of hearts, our schools are in crisis. While I teach at the high school, I've been in every school in the district over the past several months, and in some instances, have been surprised at what I've seen. At Jackson Avenue School, children have music class in a partitioned off area of the cafeteria. At the high school, art is held in a former custodial supply room. Four doors down from my classroom, one of my colleagues has thirty-two students in one of his classes. This year, for the first time ever, our band couldn't fit on the stage during our annual concert because we have outgrown it. There's room for debate about the new school referendum, but we must first agree on a common set of facts. Our district has grown over the past decade by nearly a thousand students, with more projected to come, thanks to a number of factors, including residential redevelopment. Because we are overcapacity, over two hundred students are currently in a rented facility at Padre Pio, which costs us over seven hundred thousand annually. It is a priority to end that contract and rehouse those students in proper schools that meet state standards. This referendum is not about a fresh coat of paint. It is about getting the children of Hackensack into proper classrooms and out of the cafeteria and storage rooms. At meetings over the years, you have been a champion for new schools in Hackensack. You've said that you know, because your wife is a teacher, that our schools are crowded and that it's difficult to teach and learn under those conditions, which is sad, because it only hurts our children. That is the Mayor LeBros that I wish had made comments about the referendum. The one who wrote a letter last April calling our schools overcrowded, not the one who questions the reality as to whether or not a school is even needed. Our children will go to school tomorrow and face the reality of overcrowded classrooms, and we need to support them immediately. As I said before, I'm a taxpayer, and I understand the financial ask being made here, but to resolve the problem, not put a Band-Aid over it, it requires all of us to come together as a community and say, for ninety-six cents a day on the average home, that is enough for us to invest in our children and in our community. I'm dedicated to the children of Hackensack and know that we can do better by them. We are all entitled to our own opinions, but we cannot deny facts. They need all of us to be leaders for them and show that education is worth investing in. A few months ago, when another referendum was on the ballot, you were quoted as saying, "There's nothing more important than making sure our children have places to play." I respectfully disagree and say there is nothing more important than making sure our children have adequate facilities to learn in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Seeing no one from the public? Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Roll call? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Not opposed. Mr. Monroonberg?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Earlier, we had an open meeting to the public regarding improvements to Stipe Park, where comments were taken, considerations from the public. It involved a possible new dog park, as well as improvements to the bathrooms and possible covering for the Stipe Park area for the children. So, more will have to come of that. We will get more detailed plans, but again, the purpose of that meeting was to get input from the community, to have ideas considered, and that's the stage we're at with the Stipe Dog Park. So, again, just look forward to other things to come. In regards to the Board of Ed, there's been a lot of discussions about the Board of Ed referendum. For those of you who weren't here earlier, I'm not going to reiterate what I, what I said, but this is my thoughts and feelings on it. I don't believe anyone that came up here and spoke on the Board of Ed or the council has children in the school district. I do. I have two and I'll have three next year, so I have a vested interest. I am not against improvements. We are in dire need of improvements. My students are at Parker School. It's an open concept, where it's dangerous. I don't agree with how it's laid out, so I am all for improvements in the school. However, as a prior educator, I don't believe that a seven-through-nine school and a three-through-six central school is appropriate for educating our students. I don't. I will not support that structure. I've expressed those feelings and thoughts from the beginning. I don't agree. I have proposed other arrangements for a new school, bringing community schools back. I don't think it's, it's conducive to learning, to emotional support for the students. I don't. So, I will not support that structure. In regards to a new facility, if the numbers show that we need a new facility, I am all on board for it. Again, I have children in the school. Together, they have 25 more years of education ahead of them than the public schools. I have three children. I cannot afford to send anyone to private school. So, I have a vested interest in the, in the schools. However, there's two things that have to be determined. We have to have the state's conclusion on how they're going to handle Maywood. We have to know that. I know there's a lot of people believe that it's not gonna happen, but there's no evidence of that yet. And having a seven-through-nine school may give Maywood the ammunition they need to leave, because as a parent in a sending district, I don't think it's fair sending a student to seventh, to ninth grade and then turning around a year later and having them go to another school. So, I would like to have finality on that. I would like the residency check to be complete as well. I don't know what stages we are in the residency check. I can tell you firsthand, I see students that I know don't belong in the schools. And I know there's hardship cases and affidavit cases that have to be handled correctly, but I would like to know where we are in regards to that before we propose a new facility. Again, I am all on board for improvements. We need improvements. It's an embarrassment, the way some of the facilities look, and for safety reasons as well. But in regards to a new structure, I have to have more answers and more confidence in those answers that are given to me. And I, I don't agree with the structure that's being laid out, three-through-six and a seven-through-nine central school. I don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. First, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone, and we had a great 2018 in Hackensack, and I look forward to an even better 2019 here as well. A couple of things on the agenda tonight, I think, were worth mentioning. We adopted the ordinance for the record property. It's wonderful to see that property start to turn around and be developed. There's a potential there for up to 622 units that will be developed in three separate phases. The first phase will be accomplished at about 272 units. And as part of that first phase, they will make all the riverfront improvements that, again, making, extending the riverfront and what they're proposing is really gonna be lovely and an amenity that everyone in the city can enjoy. There were updates on here that we approved to the general rehab plan, for the rehab zone for the city. Again, that's a living document, folks. So, as we learn more, as things happen, we continue to make change and make improvement to make our city the best it can be and to enforce the rules that, that continue to support putting the right development in the right place with, throughout the city. Something new on the agenda, looking for redevelopment study up on Main Street. You're familiar with Bruce the Bed King? So, we're taking a look at that continued, that block where you see Bruce the Bed King and seeing if that has a potential for rehab or redevelopment designation. Something else on tonight, which I think is very interesting, is the resolution for the community garden. We have, we've had a real spark of new folks coming into our environmental commission, which is great. And, you know, they're proposing all kinds of wonderful ideas for the city, and one of them is looking into revitalizing the greenhouse. And even though that's gonna take some effort, we're looking to, they've proposed and the council's supporting, putting a community garden alongside of it in that area. Again, a way to bring, you know, to utilize it, make it available to the schools and the seniors and have them kind of learning and working together. I participate in monthly meetings with Fairleigh, and Fairleigh Dickinson University is trying to get more engaged with the city of Hackensack. And this is something they're also very interested in, in having some of their students and their interns be part of this. So, I think that's a very exciting project for us. Thanks to Ted and the mayor, I see on here the resolution that our new salt shed, the agreement is here, that our salt shed is now going to be on county property. Again, this saved a significant amount of money for the city, not having to buy a new piece of property to house our salt for the, for the winter. And thanks again to Mr. Tedesco and the county for enabling that wonderful shared service. So, that's, again, that's all, all great news for us. I'm not going to belabor the point on, on the school referendum. If anyone is watching and is interested, at the city website, hackensack.org, we have videos of the committee of the whole, as well as this council meeting. And the latter part, the second half of the committee of the whole, there was a presentation made by the Board of Education, there was public comment, and there was comment by all of us. And you can hear all of it yourself and, and take time to understand all the facts. In a nutshell, yes, Mr. Gaines, educating our youth is a priority, a priority for everyone in the city and a priority for everyone in the council. We continue to be very supportive and try and enable a good relationship with the Board of Ed and work together. Up until this point, Stephanie and myself have been part of those meetings, and the, the information that we share at those meetings has been between us. Unfortunately, the questions that we've been asking have not been answered. And we feel it's only fair, if, if the Board of Ed is presenting their information, that the public has that information as well, that there are a lot of unanswered questions. No one is saying, "We don't need a new school." No one is saying, "We don't need renovations for a new school." What we're saying is, "Let's do it in a way that makes sense." Right? There was a roomful of people here tonight, and when we mentioned the fact that, that could have been split and there could have been options. I think everyone in this room unanimously said, "If we did, if we didn't do the new school right away, if we voted on the four other options to get the upgrades in and to do some of the, the changes that need to be made for an impact to an average home of being around $100 a year," everyone's pretty much unanimously yelled out, "They would be in favor of that." So, folks want to see these things done, but they want to see it done in a meaningful way. They also don't want to put the cart before the horse. Stephanie brought up the very valid points. The reregistration wasn't even started to be done until October this year, because we asked for it. That's something that should have been done before any of this was even considered. You should know exactly what your student population is. I mean, there, I, I don't want to reiterate everything, but there's so many questions that need to be answered. Let's take a step back. Let's answer the questions. Let's come up with what's best for everyone in the city. Please, take the time to watch the video and hear the remarks from, from, from the Board of Ed and from the City Council and from the many residents that attended that meeting as well. Everyone, have a good evening, and thank you all for coming.
The type of administration that we got now is like, we work together and sometimes we split the responsibilities, you know, Kathy and Stephanie and then being involved with the problem with the Board of Education to try to go through this referendum. And I get involved with DPDW, SUEAs, and different other things. So, for the information that I receive from Stephanie and Kathy, I get to the conclusion that, the same like the other people were saying, that if we split the referendum, let us add a new building here and do all the improvements and repair, I will be in favor. Right now, you know, I need more answers, and for that, I hope so we can go to the table again in the next few weeks. And I looking forward to try to do the best I can for the kids. The kids, the education for me is a priority, but in the particular case, I think we gotta come back to the table again. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, where were we? Had a very good presentation tonight for Stipe Park, as was mentioned. Had a lot of great input from the taxpayers and residents, expressing all different kinds of concerns. So, we will go back to the drawing board with them and work out another plan and work one that works with them. I mean, that's, you know, that's what we're supposed to do. They had some great ideas, things we hadn't even thought of, so it's good to get that public input. I, myself, am not going to go too deep into the school issue again. You can see my feelings if you watch the Cal meeting. It's just that certain things I found disappointing in this, and I call it the oops factor. To this day, the tax, the average taxpayer has not been notified of this. There's been town halls, yes, but the attendance on those is not, you know, has not been advertised in a proper way. It should have been mailed out to the voters, so that they could have been at these meetings. I think the biggest snafu, and I'm gonna go over this again, because it's the most upsetting to me of anything I've seen, and it's came to my attention today, because today is the first day I've seen the ballot. It was a copy of, was actually a picture of it, was mailed to me. And evidently, this referendum is only gonna cost the average house taxpayer $10 per year, according to the ballot. $10 a year. Says it right here. Black and white. I'll read it. Average assessed home, 245, 431, translates into an average tax impact of $308.66 over 30 years. I read that as about $10 a year. It's just the way it reads. You show me where it says, "Anywheres," "Per year," "Annually," "Nowheres." These are the mistakes I'm talking about. You say, "I don't want a new school." No, I want it done right. I want everything done right. I want answers to the questions. Yes, I say, "We need a new school." Then the board liaison, or the council liaisons that have been meeting with the board come to me and say, "Have I got any answers on any of the most important issues here and why we would need a new school? Registration, Maywood, no fiscal impact studies, none of the analysis on the cost, the recurring cost of this school? No one's been given any of the recurring cost. If you hire 50 teachers, they're not free. That's going on your taxes next year, along with $308 for a $245,000 house." So, you know, we want the cost. We want to know what it is, right? Taxpayers deserve it. But the fact that the taxpayers have not been mailed anything. And the other disturbing part, and I know this now, it's very disturbing, is there's a 60-day rule. You cannot send a mailing for a Board of Ed referendum without the superintendent of county schools approving it. Well, as of Friday, this was not done, but they were sending out a mailer on the 7th. So, how could that possibly be? It's either you weren't gonna send it out, or you didn't know about the 60-day rule. It's one or the other. So, you know, you sit there and you criticize me because of things I said up here? Yes, we may need a new school. I don't believe in a seven, eight, nine school. Every report I've read, how many are in the state of New Jersey? Anybody know? Does anybody know if there's any seven, eight, nines in the state of New Jersey? Maybe one? Maybe one. I think maybe one coming in North Bergen.
Maybe one private one.
One priv- Yeah, and the things I read from the consortium made sense to me, that ninth graders shouldn't be with seventh graders, ninth graders should be with 10th, 11th, 12th graders. All right? We haven't stopped, this will not stop the bottleneck at the middle school in any way, shape, or form. Now, you're gonna have third graders, if the parents are strapped and can't get in there, walking from Jackson Avenue to the middle school. None of these questions are answered. These are all legitimate, fair questions that were asked by council liaisons to these meetings, and not one thing has been answered. Not one thing. So, it's not shame on me. I don't feel bad at all about it. I feel bad, you know what I feel bad about? If this thing was done properly and split up into pieces, I guarantee you, within a year, within a year, you'd have air conditioning and renovated schools in this city. That's what really bothers me. This all-or-nothing plan, for people to tell me, "You can't put air conditioning in Hillers unless I have a school over here," is bizarre. I just don't buy it. And I realized the reason that was said the way it was, but it reads as, "None of the other stuff, we can't renovate or fix any of the schools unless we have a new school." I don't buy that, because if we didn't need new school, we still need to renovate our schools. So, with that, I wish everybody, Happy New Year to everybody, and it's been a long, long night, very trying night, but-
You have to go into executive session, right?
Yeah, we still have to go in the back room. So, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Steve, do you have any? I have to read the resolution. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the mayor and council wish to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving purchase lease or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days or at such time as the interests of the city not require confidentiality.
Yeah, given, given the late hour, I, I don't think I have anything that urgent to bring up for litigation. Obviously, as usual, if something does come up, I will announce it at the end. Obviously, you know, the, the meeting room should stay open, the doors should stay open until we go out, but no formal action's gonna be taken by the council once we go into closed session when we return. I, I can put that on the record, at least.
Let's get it done. And a motion to close the regular meeting.
Enough already. Motion to close the regular meeting.
And to officially close the, the special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.